Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to our study session for August ninth. This meeting is called the order. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Boden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
All right. It's nice to see members of the public today. The study sessions, there'll be no public comment tonight. Some of these items could end up on a business or action item in the future. Our first study item this evening is a downtown visioning. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us.
Good evening, Mayor Deputy Mayor, Council Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So I gave you folks a presentation in January about the downtown street tree issues that we're having. They're growing bigger than the tree wells, pushing up sidewalks. We had an arborist report done. The trees are going to continue to cause problems. There's probably about a third of them that are actually really bad off right now. When you walk around, you figure out which ones they are. But the arborist recommends that all the trees need to come out. Unfortunately, these select Cleveland pears become real brittle with age. And we're going to have problems with crowns breaking out and that sort of thing. Also, the roots, there's no root barrier. And so to move forward with our arborist recommendations and with what council had recommended, they wanted to see how the downtown street tree replacement project would integrate with the downtown visioning plan. That was done, what was it, 2015, 2016, right in that period? So we went away, we've been gone for about six months. We hired Jones and Jones Architecture, and I got Charlie here that put together this presentation that's in the council packet that shows pretty much what the visioning plan was talking about, but specifics now. What may be a better spot for the street trees, maybe a better way to widen the sidewalks? So we weren't trying to navigate away from that vision plan and go through a whole huge public involvement process. We wanted to stay within the plan and talk to council about what their thoughts are. And then get a revision out, a plan sheet out to all the business owners and that sort of thing and do some public involvement. So with that, we have Charlie here for a presentation from Jones and Jones. And Janelle is with him also somewhere in the background there. And Charlie, it's all yours.
Well, thank you, Jay, and thank you, council, for inviting us to be part of your study session tonight. So we'll just get right to it and pull up the streetscape design. Janelle, if you want to share the screen with the images. And I'm hoping this comes off without a hitch, but.
I'm having some connectivity issues that I should be sharing the screen.
There we go. All right. So we're off. So before we discuss the proposed design for the streetscape and new trees along Railroad Avenue, I thought a little background information about the history of street trees in cities might be appropriate. And basically how trees came to be planted along city streets. So let's just go to the next image here, Janelle. Janelle, are you there? Jay, you might have to pull it up on your end. I think Janelle's having, she's been having technical difficulties all day.
Yeah, I'm on the historic photos right now.
Go to the previous, the slide just previous to this one. All right, okay, so well, throughout the 1700s and into the early 1800s, although American towns might be surrounded by forest and trees, the early villages and towns were often laid out around tree shaded greens and commons for grazing cattle and for public gatherings. Then as towns and cities grew, cities, trees were planted along streets to provide shade for horses. So in fact, the upright decorative metal tree guards that are still sometimes installed around tree trunks were initially used to keep tethered horses from chewing the bark off of trees. And then by the 1850s, let's, we can go to the next slide. The, the value of trees and cities and towns for shade, beautification, and improved social and physical health had become well established in Europe and this country. Street trees and lush parks became synonymous with what's called the urban sanitizing movement of the mid 1800s when New York Central Park was created. And when the integration of trees and nature into towns and cities was seen as a way to improve the urban environment, foster civic virtue and pride, and improve human health. Then by the late 1800s and early 1900s, the romantic urban pastoral movement and the city beautiful movement further propelled the planting of trees along city streets. So street trees have been with us ever since, whereby they remain valued for providing beauty, scenery, shade, and creating a sense of civic pride and understated grandeur along both residential and commercial streets in our cities and towns. Excuse me. So let's go to the next image. So for this project, in addition to identifying the location and type of new street trees for Railroad Avenue, we were asked to develop a comprehensive streetscape design for the corridor. The streetscape design we're showing you this evening therefore addresses crosswalks, parking, travel lane configuration, sidewalks, street furniture and art, gateway elements, gathering places, and other elements. So many of the design recommendations we're presenting are consistent with the 2017 Railroad Avenue Corridor Study and the 2015 Community Vision and Downtown Revitalization Plan that, as Jay mentioned. The, the design is also based on a fairly detailed programmatic statement for streetscape improvements that was developed with Jay and Mark in the spring of this year. So the exhibits here depict the proposed streetscape improvements for the eight block stretch of Railroad Avenue between Eighth Street and Front Street. And our intent, in addition to building upon the previous studies, was to produce a design that creates an attractive, safe, efficient, consistent, low cost, and easy to maintain streetscape. Generally, as shown in this diagram, the street cross section consists of an eastbound lane, a westbound lane, a center turn lane, parallel parking along both sides of the street, and widened sidewalks, all fitting within the existing back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk dimension or the existing street right of way. And instead of trying to integrate bike lanes within this cross section, as had been proposed in one of the previous studies, a bike route or bikeway would be designated along either Cota Street, one block to the south, or along Franklin Street, one block to the north where there's less traffic. So let's go to the next image. This is, this is a, a series of images or planned views of the corridor beginning with Eighth Street on the left continuing to, or excuse me, Eighth Street on the right continuing to Front Street to the, to the right, left to right. So the design elements are consistent from one block to the next with painted crosswalks and intersections, a painted center turn lane of different color or pattern, enlarged crosswalk bulb outs with curb cuts, slightly widened sidewalks using unit pavers for the widening, and large at grade planter beds for trees. So this but, but design vocabulary is applied consistently over this eight block section with some adjustments, adaptations to driveway openings, drive cuts. Some of the blocks are a little bit longer than others and so forth. And some of the, some of the other block conditions vary where we tried to adapt, adapt the design to those, those different conditions. So let's go to the next image here. All right. So as I mentioned, the streetscape elements are uniform from one block to the next. Painted crosswalks, we had discussed using some kind of a textured pavement or maybe even unit pavers, but really the painted crosswalks can be done in different colors and patterns. And they're very effective and very cost effective, should mention. Similarly, with a median treatment, we thought that simply painting the median, the turn, the center turn lane, it's not really a median, the center turn lane, a different color, different texture would help break up the width, the overall width of the paved street cross section. The sidewalks would be, the existing sidewalks would be pretty much left in place and simply widened with a band of unit pavers on the outside of the sidewalks. The curb would be moved, have to be moved inboard slightly to accommodate this sidewalk widening. The sidewalks through the, along Railroad Avenue are, are, they're adequate, but they could be wider. And we thought, just, just with this little bit of widening, which amounts to maybe two or three feet, it'd just create a much more comfortable pedestrian experience or sidewalk along the street. And the unit pavers are inexpensive. They just provide a nice edge texture, edge treatment to the sidewalk. And we even thought that buried conduit could be installed beneath, beneath the unit pavers to provide electrical outlets, electrical service to the tree, tree wells for lighting the trees at, at Christmas time. There would be enlarged bulb outs, Item D, with improved curb cuts. And the idea of maybe movable planters in the median came about when there had been discussion in one of the previous studies about a planted median. We didn't think that that made sense, particularly for the parade and so forth. The planted permanent median would really kind of encumber how the parade can move through the street, down the street. So we thought if there was a desire to have some kind of plants in the median or in the turn lane, basically between the intersections, maybe movable planters might be a way to accommodate that. And then the other key aspect of this are these large at grade tree planters. So one of the problems with the existing pear trees is they're planted in small tree wells surrounded by pavement and capped with tree grates. And there simply isn't enough room for tree roots that have grown under the pavement, cracked and lifted it. And that situation will only become worse. So the large proposed at grade planter beds will provide adequate room for healthy root growth and healthy trees. I should mention that the planter beds will require removal of a few on-street parking spaces, but there will still be plenty of on-street parking stalls along both sides of the street. And in addition, the planter beds can be designed to treat and detain some of the stormwater runoff coming from the, from the street pavement. So let's go to the next image. Among the streetscape elements, we were asked to address, we looked at wayfinding signage for which there are several design options ranging from panels and placards to information kiosks and maps. So we're happy to recommend a signage system based on the city's preferences. Or we can select this system that we think would be appropriate. We discussed storefront, storefront awnings and canopies on the fronts of buildings that would provide visual interest and rain protection. We think it's a, you know, great idea. But a separate project would need to be launched to work out awning designs with individual buildings for individual buildings. Basically, awnings would need to fit with the architecture of each building. But nevertheless, be, you know, contribute to the, the streetscape character and ambience and provide rain protection. Instead of fixed benches, which can be somewhat difficult to cite and expensive, it might be better if the city allowed merchants to put out tables and chairs and benches along sidewalks at their storefronts. Public art and sculpture, as kind of depicted here, definitely adds a fun and interesting aspect, as long as it doesn't restrict pedestrian access and movement. And importantly, the public art should reflect or say something about the place and locale. And it's an opportunity to engage local artists in developing some kind of a street sculpture along, that would fit along sidewalks as part of the streetscape. And just modest things like flower pots and baskets and bright colorful, interesting window displays can do a lot to improve the street appearance and pedestrian experience. So let's flip to the next image here. So this block between fourth and third is occupied by Evergreen Square, the clock tower. And per the previous studies, we agree that this can become a terrific linear plaza or promenade by reconfiguring the parking lot north of the clock tower. And by implementing a few modest improvements, like an interesting paving pattern, to kind of define the, the linear plaza space and the addition of a few trees along the north side of the space to buffer it from the parking area. The square promenade really should be seen and used as a flexible public space used for food carts and lunchtime seating and for occasional events like art fairs and celebrations. Again, for seating, inexpensive movable, movable tables and chairs would be fine. Art and sculpture can be permanent or changing. And here, though, really the cost for unit pavers would be better spent for Evergreen Square than in street crosswalks where a painted pattern would be, would be adequate. So let's go to the next image. Which is the, for the next block to the to the right, where the Tally train engine and cars could be integrated or linked with Evergreen Square by widened sidewalks, which again are done with unit pavers. That's what's depicted here. So the two block promenade or linear plaza would basically include Evergreen Square and Tally and extend all the way to Post Office Park and possibly link to Post Office Park, again with the decorative pavers, unit pavers. And again, the Tally would be the primary attraction here. We've proposed kind of opening up a view of the, of the engine by eliminating on-street parking, just having a planter there, wider sidewalk, but still a few on-street parking spaces to the, to the west. So let's go to the next image. And if I'm coming up on my 25 minutes, please let me know. So as part of this developing recommendations for a streetscape, we were also asked to kind of look at what we might be able to do for a gateway downtown along Railroad Avenue. And at first coming up with a design for Railroad Avenue gateways posed a bit of a challenge, but Jay asked us if there was some use for the deactivated railroad signal structures near 11th Street. And we hit upon the idea of using them as a framework or an armature for a gateway sign at the west end of Railroad Avenue. So the, excuse me. So the signal structures would need to be aligned with each other, connected together at the top, and then perhaps painted black with ladders and lights removed. But they should be tall and strong enough to support a sign or placard announcing historic downtown Shelton or historic Railroad Avenue. And so the examples, the four examples on this page to the left kind of show where, you know, these steel frameworks have been done to create kind of gateways over streets announcing the downtown area, historic district or whatever. So we thought that these railroad sign structures shown in the upper photographs or signal structures could be adapted to that. And again, they're painted black, the signals would have to come off of them. But it'd be a way to create a gateway flanking Railroad Avenue or over Railroad Avenue. And as the east end of the Railroad Avenue to commemorate or celebrate Shelton as Christmas Town USA, we thought two giant sequoias and large planter beds flanking Railroad Avenue would constitute the east gateway at First Street. So that's kind of what's depicted to the, on the right side of this image. And sequoia trees do grow in Shelton. We've seen a few of them, and they just have this characteristic pyramidal shape that stays like this, kind of like a, a pruned cone from the time they're small to the time they're 100 years old. And we thought that it might be a kind of a cool gateway statement at the, at the east end of the, of the street. So finally, the, for the street trees themselves, let's go to the next image. We, for the, for the street trees, we recommend using three or four different species to avoid the problem of using just one species that could succumb to some disease or test later on. That's kind of the problem with a monoculture planting of one species. So the five species shown here are all tough, long-lived, tried and true street trees that grow to a moderate size. And the form, size, and foliage of these species aren't identical, but they're similar enough in shape and form that they will look consistent with each other if three or four species are used. Their fall color will change, will be a little bit different, but that, again, just kind of adds some interest, some visual character. But these trees are all been used for a long time, along city streets. They can withstand pretty harsh conditions. And particularly if we're putting them in these larger planter beds, they should, they should be fine. So we would recommend that using three or four of these species for the trees along Railroad Avenue. There are others, but we thought these were probably a good choice right here. We wouldn't necessarily use all five, but again, three, at least three, maybe four of these species would, would work just, just very well. They provide shade, they're high branching, so when they do start to branch out over the sidewalk or street, they can be pruned up so that people can pass underneath them, cars can pass underneath them. And again, they just work really well in urban conditions. So that was an overview of the streetscape design. Not sure how we're doing on time, but happy to answer any questions, kind of go back and look at some of the, revisit some of these images, plan drawings and so forth to discuss anything in more detail.
Want to have any questions?
Well. Pink dogwood.
Look at that, ask him.
Yes, but about pink dog, how do I?
Yeah, so Charlie, the question is, is at the January meeting, a question came up whether we could use dogwoods, pink dogwoods as a street tree. We spoke about that a little bit when we were walking along. And you have a long career of different sorts of trees in this type of environment. And what are your thoughts, sir?
Well, street dogwoods are considered an ornamental tree. They're used more for decorative purposes. They don't have the stature, the size and stature of what we, you know, typically think of as a street tree, something that at least, you know, gets close to the proportions, size of the pear trees that are there now, or maybe even larger. The dogwoods are, and there's a number of other trees that are similar. They're really kind of accent trees and they, they, they stay fairly small, compact. They just don't provide a, a good canopy for shade. They don't cast much shade. The Pacific dogwood is a big tree. I mean it. The native dogwood gets to be fairly tall. It's somewhat upright. But it's kind of touchy. It doesn't do real well in kind of urban situations where there's a lot of pavement. Water may be an issue, lack of water. So yeah, the, the dogwoods could be used at selective places, certain places where we wanted some colorful accent. But, you know, they really don't work as, as street trees. The canopy doesn't get very large. It's, they're, when they're younger, at least the, the non-native dogwoods from Asia, they, they're kind of low branching. So there's, there's kind of problematic.
But I'll just on a little bit here, if I'm coming through clearly, to add to Charlie. This is Janelle with Jones and Jones. And dogwoods are a little bit more finicky than these other street trees that have sort of been the tried and true street soldiers, we can say. Dogwoods are more particular about their soil condition and their watering needs. And I think that you all currently do manual watering and that might continue. So those are considerations that we're taking under review when we're selecting these trees.
I mean, I like dogwoods. The eastern dogwood is Cornus Florida. The western dogwood is what, Cornus Pacifica? And then there was all kinds of non-native dogwoods from Asia. I think they're great trees, but they just don't really work too well as street trees for this, for what we're wanting to do here.
Charlie, I have one more question. What's the growth? How fast are these trees that you're showing here? How fast do they grow?
They're all considered, no, they're all considered to have moderate growth. And something else I'll just add real quickly. Some of the, some of the pears are in pretty bad shape. The arborist, I talked with the arborist, he thinks that all of them will eventually be in bad shape, dead, dying in 10 or 15 years. And at the same time, some of them are okay. Some of them are still fairly healthy. So it's possible that with this, with the streetscape improvements, it could be done in such a way that some of these trees, some of the existing pear trees could be, could remain until they are replaced. Until they are replaced by. New trees and the improved, the other improvements that. Where we have enlarged planters and bald outs and so forth. So it's not really a matter of coming in and just taking them all down immediately. The improvements along Railroad Avenue could be phased. From, you know, start at one end so that you go toward work at the other end and so forth, so the. Existing pears don't need to be just. Removed at this at this point in time and and. And there's maybe even the possibility that some of them, some of them could remain where they do land in those in the enlarged. Planner beds that we've shown on the plans. If there's if they're healthy and. And still in good shape. So yeah, the the street here has a number of pear trees, again, that some of them aren't too good a health. They're buckling the sidewalks, but others are, they're doing all right and they could. Remain until the streetscape improvements come about and over the next five years or so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deidre.
I have one question for you, Charlie, and I have a couple of questions for staff as well. Charlie, am I understanding the drawings correctly that you're proposing taking out the southernmost row of parking at Evergreen Square then to create the promenade around the clock tower?
Yeah, we discussed that a little bit with Jay and Mark that. There's a requirement to keep that. That parking lot there. And. We thought that. Yeah, the existing parking lot does kind of. If we left it. Pretty much the way it's laid out now. It means that this linear plaza or promenade that we suggested for. Evergreen Square is is just basically a what becomes a widened sidewalk, whereas if we can slightly reconfigure that parking lot. Take out a few parking spaces. We can get a little bit, we can get much wider, much more comfortable. Linear Plaza for Evergreen Square and. What we found too was. I think in the Railroad Avenue study, I mean, they they basically proposed doing something similar here. But they proposed in that study, keeping diagonal parking spaces. And we found that. By just making them parallel parking spaces like this or perpendicular parking spaces. We can actually get. More more spaces here, I think the count here is about fifty-five, fifty-six spaces. So we tried to minimize removing too many of those spaces at the same time, keeping that parking lot. And. Creating a fairly comfortable linear plaza promenade for Evergreen Square so that. The width of what's showing here that would be done in unit pavers is about thirty, thirty-five feet in width. All right.
Thank you. Yeah, and just a couple of questions for staff and then perhaps when we get to the end, some comments for council to consider, but. Jay, can you tell me, do we have any concerns with expanding the greenery or the style of greenery that we selected for that promenade? I know there's been some activity around the clock tower and some concerns with staff having to keep up with that. That would be the first question. And then secondly, do our current sidewalks meet all of the ADA requirements for width currently? And the additional unit paper would be for pedestrian experience, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, that's correct. So the last question, ADA access, you have to have four foot clear around poles, obstructions, street seating, that sort of thing. These unit papers that get added on would add on to the existing width of sidewalks, it will be even wider. Which could allow business owners to put tables like right up against their building and still have plenty of room. It just, it'll give you more working space there and it all depends on each building, each frontage, right? It's sort of a case by case basis for that. When we talk about the reconfiguration of Evergreen Square. You could see here that the proposal was to put pavers in and a backdrop of trees. And I don't know, the trees might be smaller, dogwoods for the backdrop, that sort of, they might be a little bit better there. But in terms of the seating that was being proposed, that would come in and out with events.
Sure.
It wouldn't be permanent.
Yeah, and particularly I was looking at whether there's trees or shrubs, saying that some of the ground. Ground plants particularly have been challenging for upkeep and maintenance and and, you know, trash and all of that. So looking at what exactly we're putting in there. And then any concern with driver visibility at the intersections with those bulb outs?
That's correct. So the tree would be sighted in a location where the future trunk wouldn't impair. When the tree is smaller, you don't have any problems at all, other than the leaves might be a little old, might need trimmed up a little bit. Typically, the driver's eye and a sight distance calculation is at three and a half feet, you're looking at an object down the road at four and a half feet, this is top of the car. Shouldn't be any issues to start with, but when the trees got bigger, we would make sure that, you know, that twelve inch trunk or, you know, something, you know, forty, fifty years from now. That you're not pulling out and having an issue way down the road. The plan is that these trees make it two hundred years, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I mean, that'd be that'd be ideal. It'd be something we're remembered for, but the, you're right. You're you're right, the when they're when they're smaller, I mean, you're basically, even when they're small, they're going to be. Fairly high branching and the foliage won't be in the way, it won't obstruct obstruct sight distance and the trees themselves. What they're they're only like four inches in diameter. And then when they get bigger, they're, I mean, for a long time, they're they're only going to be eight, twelve inches in diameter. It's about the width of a telephone pole, power pole. And so seeing either side of that shouldn't shouldn't be a problem. The bulb outs, everything, but everything that's done here is really the. Also slow traffic down, so. People moving down the Railroad Avenue, coming in from the side streets at the intersections. The bulb outs really kind of constrict the corridor, they give pedestrians the. More emphasis or more of the control and crossing the street, so. The the traffic should be moving slower, traffic should be moving more cautiously because of the. The way the streetscape is is done here with bulb outs, crosswalks, trees. Everything really, we know it's a truck corridor. We're not sure how much truck traffic is along here. All the more reason to maybe just kind of keep the crosswalks and the center turn lane painted. Because truck traffic will degrade pavement, no matter what it is, concrete, pavers, stamped concrete. So. When the tape, when the street needs to be resurfaced, it could be resurfaced with asphalt and then the crosswalks. Center turn lanes simply need to be repainted.
In your opinion, is this a project that stands on its own or is it best bundled with rehabilitation of railroad or a paving project or something like that?
Yeah, great question. So there's a bunch of projects that get lined out with this. One of the goals was if we're going to do the trees, my recommendation, we spoke at this at the last meeting. Is go on and take care of them, get them in the spot, get them growing, get the Christmas lights back on them and that sort of thing. Then the phase two would probably be the curb and the unit pavers. And the electrification, the outlets are going to be a little bit of a problem because they're going to go under the pavers. Most likely, we haven't got obviously the final design phase, it's still conceptual. But move the trees along maybe next year, fix the sidewalks, take out the tree wells. And then come in, but we have a water line right now, the water line is a little small and it's asbestos cement. We really want to go to duct iron pipe all the way down, probably replace all the old building services at the same time. And then come in with a fresh overlay and re-stripe. And then at that time, we would put in any of the new painted surfaces, that sort of thing. You know, the median planners, if you choose, so the movable ones, those sorts of things. So sort of a multi-phase project, really not culminating until probably the water line needs to get done and then the paving. So somewhere in twenty twenty-seven, maybe twenty twenty-eight. South there a little ways. Just because of the backlog of other projects that are coming with the budget, okay, and we can reprioritize things too, right? But you'll see in the budget book, there's a lot of things that are sort of stacked up in order right now.
Want to answer questions?
I have a series of questions for whoever is able to answer, and maybe some of them are just comments. But first of all, thank you for all your work on this because beautification of our community is really important for so many reasons. But I have heard that the painted turn lanes have been kind of an issue because weather and it's just a lot of upkeep. And I'm just wondering if there's a more efficient way that we can handle that. They might be beautiful, but maybe there is a better way to handle the painted turn lanes, are they really important? Can we, I don't know, pavers are an option, maybe there's something to look at there.
Yeah, so I can answer that one. So the painted turn lanes require us to roll the paint on every year to keep them looking good. We do it before Forest Festival, you know, early in the year, every season, they look pretty good right now. But you go out there in March of next year and they're looking pretty poor. There are more durable epoxy type of paints that last a little longer, but they're extremely expensive. So we have that, we also have the other issue of snow removal, so people wondered why we're not plowing downtown. In from eighth down to front or first. And the reason is all those buttons that we come along with the blade and all those come up, right? Then we got to put them all back down again. And so people complain, why, why aren't we plowing down there? And that that's the reason is because of that. So there's an alternate design where you go a standard striping. And we have a graphic, I think council saw that, Jeff should have emailed that, City Imagine Night emailed that to you. And I can send it again if you'd like to see it, what it looks like today, what it looks like if you go more conventional. Where we put the recess marker in and and that way we can plow. So it's a little bit of a give and take there on that, but yes, the medium paint is quite a bit of work.
Right, and time is money, so so that was important. And then also, the tree is obviously important for so many reasons, but then you guys are showing us these. Movable planters, is there a reason that we can't do that where the sidewalks are so that we're not tearing up the sidewalks every so often when the trees get too big?
Well, the. So let me get your question straight, or Charlie, why don't you answer this one?
Yeah, the. The movable planters, I mean, you can buy huge movable planters, but they will only accommodate a tree of a certain size. And. The. Idea here was to put the new trees in large at-grade. Planters, the the surface of these. Tree planters along the street would be, they'd just be slightly above the dirt elevation. Ground elevation, just be slightly above the street. They'd be flush with the sidewalk and these these planters are fairly big, they're nine feet by twenty feet. With, you know, three or four feet of good soil in them. So they will accommodate a tree, good, healthy root growth, healthy tree for a long time. They will not buckle the pavement, either the street pavement or the sidewalk pavement. And yeah, it's just a create so much more. Get much more bang for the for the buck, have a good sized tree. With a nice canopy, providing shade, so forth. And. The unit, the the the. Movable planters would, that was something that was really just kind of recommended. As something that could be done in the center turn lane between the intersections. So that at the intersections, people could still make a left. But more mid-block, these movable planters. Could be put in the center turn lane to just again, kind of break up the. The street cross-section, slow down traffic, introduce kind of an interesting element. In the center of the street. But the movable planters really aren't. That great for big trees, for larger trees.
Did that answer your question?
Sure, and then I think my last question is the awnings and the canopies in front of the businesses, that looks fantastic, let's pay for that.
Yeah, well, a couple of different things there, on the awnings, it's typically the business owner would put them in as a reinstall them. They would match maybe a certain color theme, that sort of thing, there might be a downtown design standard, right? Also, the last city I worked with, we had the awning improvement grants for building beautification grants. That were offered for the downtown business owners with different types of features. We had bike racks, we had benches, awning grants, that sort of thing to incentivize the owners. To to replace their awnings and with a goal, eventually there's an awning for the majority of the street side. That way, when people are shopping, they don't have an umbrella, they can keep it down and walk from shop to shop.
Right, love the idea, just.
But we would need to incentivize most likely to really get some traction there.
I had a question about when you were talking about possibly running new lines into the businesses. Is there something we can offer where we can do a discounted six-inch maintenance in there so sprinkler systems can get put into the buildings easier? While we're already tore up, if there's something along that line, because that's the biggest holdback for sprinklers. You got to bring in those big lines, it's not an easy task.
Yeah, so we would need to look on it at a billing by billing basis, I mean, the preference would be coming in the back parking lot. Maybe with the data line and keep the metered service up front, the smaller lines. Because you start putting bigger pipes in, you're moving more sidewalk and, you know, getting bigger subs. And then when they do want to connect to the fire line, they're digging up the sidewalk again, right?
So back, is there any way to exterior put those, run those along the building, run those in a different route other than underground?
Yeah, we can look at that, we'd have potential freezing issues, but we can look at that.
I just had a question about the trees, I believe in our last, in January, we talked about this, we talked it was better to just do all the trees at once so they grow the same. Was that your recommendation or do you think leaving some of the? The other trees there will work out?
Well, just I, you know, it's just kind of depends on how things are phased. You certainly want to do all the underground utility work. And get that out of the way, so you're not coming back and digging things up, either the street sidewalks, planters. To put in these underground utilities, whatever's being considered right now. Should, you know, happen first and then the, what we're calling the streetscape improvements, which really involve. Replacing a lot of curb. Relaying a lot of curb. And the, I think you mentioned the street needs to be repaved. You know, all that starts to happen after the underground utility work takes place. So I may, I maybe lost the question here, but the trees.
The question was, you're placing all the trees at once or staggering them down over the years?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, if it depends on how you go about doing this, if you're doing two blocks at a time. Of with streetscape improvements, with widened sidewalks, new curbs, bulb outs. Maybe the other. Blocks that maybe you do, you do two blocks one year, two blocks the next year, two blocks later. And those later blocks, the street trees just remain until you're ready to put in the streetscape improvements. I just, I'm just not sure how your funding is going to work, how you're going to, how you would phase this. There's just different ways it could be phased. Could go block by block. Or you could do it with just certain elements and take care of certain elements like the curb replacement or. In the first year and then. Doing the planters in the second year over the entire eight block segment, it's, I just. Don't know how the your funding might be able to. It's, I just uh don't know how the, your funding might be able to um be structured to kind of phase the uh the development or these improvements. But
Right, I'll try and hear also, so if, um, you know, there's a lot of ways to think about this. And I understand the idea of having a uniform aesthetic by having all the trees installed at the same time at about the same size. You know, there one way to get around that, which comes back to the budget and phasing that Charlie was mentioning is installing the trees, you know, in year one. And then you're ready to do, you know, blocks B and D one or two years later. Maybe you want to increase the size of tree that you're purchasing on the outset to get that height initially. Um, there's a lot of considerations that come in play there, but that doesn't mean that there's um not an option if you're looking for more of a uniform aesthetic.
Yeah, I mean, there's been lots of, there have been lots of studies looking at what tree, what happens to trees when they're planted at different sizes. Um, they found that trees that are one and a half inches in caliper caught up with uh when they're planted, they'll catch up with the s- size of three-inch caliper trees in two or three years. So you plant a inch and a half tree and a three-inch tree, and in three years, they're the same size. Um, it has something to do with root shock is more more pronounced on the larger trees. They're in shock longer than a smaller tree. The smaller tree adjusts quicker, starts growing quicker. So, yeah, as DeNell mentioned, you can, um, if the tree planting is phased, maybe some of the initial trees going, the smaller trees, they'd be less expensive that way. And then the trees that go in later, they'd be a little bit larger so that they kind of all balance out. But they will all balance out over time, even if they're planted two, three, four years apart.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, this is probably more for Jay, and they were talking about funding and financing. And uh I don't know how it works, but I feel like it's really important for the community to feel involved. And maybe an option, I don't know, if um maybe people can sponsor a tree, maybe that can help fund. And maybe you give them a little plaque near the tree, this tree has been donated by family X, Y, Z, or whatever it may be. And then they can feel part of the community because community involvement um just goes such a long ways. And it's just an idea, throw something out there, maybe a local business wants to uh, I don't know, sponsor a block or sponsor a tree, just throw an idea about that.
There's also paper programs that people do.
Right.
Sponsoring papers.
Right.
So there's some good ideas or benches, that sort of thing.
I mean, people um care more about their community when they feel like they've contributed and they're involved, so.
Yeah, I think what, what the city's planning to do here shows really a commitment to making this a a really compelling downtown. A great little downtown. And uh at the same time, I think it it would be good to look to merchant merchants and the larger community for for their contribution.
Councilman Peterson.
Um, I just have two final comments, one, um, and this is not a question, but I wanted to bring forward. One concern I have looking at the plan is particularly in front of Tully, that green space taking out the two additional parking spaces. If we're successful in negotiating the post office park contract and we regain that green space. I don't know that there's a a big enough trade-off for me to take out those parking spaces. Because especially with the caboose serving as a visitor center, we see a lot of larger vehicles utilizing that parking, especially during the summer months. And if we're gonna be giving up parking anywhere, I'd rather it be for things like the movable seating and and merchant, um whether that's shopping or restaurants to increase the visitor experience. So that's the one specific piece of the plan that gives me some pause. Um, but overall, I just, again, wanna thank everyone for continuing to look at how we are crafting our downtown to be a really important part of our community, especially as we are seeing growth on the north end and potential for additional housing. I think it's really important that we start having those community conversations. And I know that City Manager Knight is not here, but he was um very clear that the next steps on this will be going out for community outreach. And I think that's gonna be a really important piece of informing us what the community needs and wants are as we take next steps.
I love all the ideas, I wish you could do them all. I love repurposing the railroad lines, that's, that's a great idea. All right, so I guess.
So, yeah, our next step is uh to take this information to the community, talk to them some more, um refine the plan and take some of these elements and get them onto a sheet of paper that's a more refined, comprehensive uh type of final plan, come back to you guys, show you that, this is what the community said. And um with a goal, you know, to get the sidewalks repaired, street trees in as soon as we could. Um, it's all budget related to, I mean, that's a good question that um we need to find the money to do this and uh and make this a priority for, you know, the city and the community.
Perfect. So are we ready to move on? All right, okay. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Jay has another study topic for downtown parking regulations.
Yes, hi, uh, good evening, uh, Council, uh, Jay Harris again, uh, your Public Works Director. So uh the city manager uh requested that we brought up downtown parking as part of this. This is sort of the downtown night, okay? So um if you go, I had an attachment with a Shell Municipal Code. That's our current um uh uh parking uh regulations, uh section eleven point oh eight. And uh that talks about violation, it talks about the signs, talks about reserved city-owned parking lots. And then it talks about camping in vehicles. Um, this is the code section. And uh anyways, uh, this replaced uh the previous chapter had a bunch of no parking zones, two-hour zones, fifteen-minute things, all sorts of stuff. So the no parking and the two-hour parking and the fifteen-minute parking are all through the police department now. And it says by the order of the Chief of Police and the sign placement. So uh that's what we have downtown now is sort of a culmination of all the years of parking standards. The signs are still there. Um, so the couple of questions is, um, you know, do you want, and there's a sign map here too that shows what the general intent was um of the various parking zones. So um just a couple of things along with the downtown project is, um, you know, there's extensive two-hour parking zones here on the map. Um, and uh, you know, they're shown, most of those signs are in, there's some that are probably up and missing, you know, when we go through and look at that. Uh, there's also some fifteen-minute loading zones here and there and that sort of thing. And so um, you know, when we're talking to the community, I thought maybe we talk to them also about the 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 two-hour signs and maybe get um back to you guys, that's the majority of it, it's the two-hour. Um, where it says no parking, that makes sense, that that's highway three, right? And that's sort of thing, right? I mean, the no parking signs and long alder make a lot of sense why those are there. We would talk more about the the two-hour signs and that sort of thing. Um, we also um currently don't have any parking enforcement um right now today. Um, that was taken away with the meters were gone in the late seventies from what I found. Parking enforcement went away when somebody retired a previous parking employee and the position wasn't refilled. And so that's also part of this conversation. Uh, that's the end of the staff presentation.
Commercial questions. I uh, I like the idea of two-hour parking downtown uh where people can actually go into a shop. And and I think we maybe fifteen-minute spots, uh maybe a business or restaurant can apply for a fifteen-minute spot out front of their business for like taking out uh food or whatever for to-go orders. But I think two-hour parking is important, there's a lot of cars that park all day long down there and nobody go down there and park. Granted, we got the square, but a lot of people out of town don't know that is a a parking spot.
Can you refresh, um, what was the driver of bringing this one up? What, do we have a parking problem, a legitimate data-driven parking problem or perception we have a parking problem?
Well, I think between maybe uh, you know, first and fifth, we might have, first and fourth, we have a problem.
I know, but I'm just asking you, was there some some information, I guess I'm just
Yeah, there was conversation about parking enforcement downtown. There was some other conversation about paid parking, this potential putting meters back in again, they'd been gone since the seventies. Um, so generally, it was just, just wanted to get your input, we're talking about downtown. Uh, what do you think about the parking? Are you okay with the way it is right now? And uh so the city manager wanted me to give a presentation, bring it up, and just, we're checking in.
Yeah, I definitely like to learn more about what the specific needs are and, you know, see what the community's input is on this. I don't, yeah, either way, sorry, yeah.
So if I would say if we're going to have it posted to our parking, then we need to enforce two-hour parking. Um, and looking at this map, there's a few places, um, like, let's see, on South Second Street, there's fifteen-minute parking. I'm sure that used to be Pantry and Cleaner's spot, right? So there's some of these that may just need to be updated by function. There's one in front of OCCU by Safeway, but not in front of Zeppelin Shipping or in front of Peninsula Credit Union. So maybe looking at some sort of an option for those fifteen minutes. And if we're gonna go with two-hour parking, I would prefer to see that we apply equally around the downtown zone. If that's what we're kind of um identifying as First to Seventh and Franklin um to Coda, which is kind of the the rough area that we've used. Um, because I would even argue that some of those side streets, well, if you ask if there's a parking problem, it depends on who you ask. Um, I get every day in my office, people complaining that they can't park and go where they wanna go. And I also have a lot of disputes between um tenants who are parking in front of merchant shops. So um, you know, there are a lot of pieces to that. And then we have signs posted, so visitors will come in and say, can I park here? It says two-hour parking. So-and-so said I don't have to worry about it. So if we're gonna have it posted, we need to enforce it. And I think that, you know, it might just be time for a refresh on some of these. But I agree with Joe, I think getting some community input on this is gonna be critical in in making decisions and next steps.
My question would be, uh, what would it cost to have a parking enforcement officer, a full-time? Uh, if if we had one in the past, what what was, what would a modern parking enforcement cost?
Hi, Jay. Hi, um, so, um, it would probably be something that would be similar to what are our code enforcement officers would make. Uh, right now, we have the two code enforcement officers that are uh busy enough that it wouldn't be something they could take on as collateral duty, you definitely have to hire someone else. I imagine a full-time employee would probably be in the same ballpark as uh the code enforcement officers or somewhere similar to that as far as step pay would be. Um, and depending on how big of an area it is, um, would depend on how many employees we would need. Uh, depending, and part of it would also depend on if it's something that's simply during weekdays, are we gonna restrict that? Is it something that you were gonna include on weekends, having staffing to properly, as Councilman Peterson said, uh, we wanna make sure that uh if we have them, that they're being enforced properly, which would mean anytime that they're in effect, we need people to be there.
Thank you. I would put this way low on my priority list, and I would much rather see a no sit, no s- no lie ordinance and hire someone at that same price point to be taking that enforcement on, other than parking that. Once again, who you talk to is an issue, but we're about to repave a beautiful parking lot right back here that people can park into, more very walkable downtown. We've got the place, the clock tower, we actually have lots of ones for parking.
I mean, yeah.
Uh, that that just, this is, this is a non-issue to me.
Yeah.
When we have other issues that we should be allocating our time and resources towards. Except maybe ten years down the line when we finish all these things, right? If it was Possibly, but parking enforcement's a very easy one to implement. In a, the grand scheme of it, you put up signs, you post things, you hire someone to enforce it. We're not dealing with the things that really matter. Bringing people here is more important, and that's not about not having enough parking, that's about our community development. My instinct was, it's not a big deal yet, but it is locally, once in a while. It's not a killer, but it's annoying for a lot of, um. If we're gonna do something, we put in more handicap parking so the people that can't walk three blocks, get that parking. Like, that would be the, uh, once again, another easy solution, we put up handicap signs or, so. Well, my temperature is not a big deal yet. Not, not, yeah, I mean, but that's kind of life. Yeah. Nothing's a big deal yet, my health isn't yet.
I know we've talked about meters and there's, you know, that program where they install the meters and they take care, the company takes care of them. They get half the profit, the city gets the other, right?
Yeah, depending on what gender you go through.
And then how does that benefit our citizens? And one reason why a lot of people moved away from big cities is because of
Right.
Ticket people, so.
Right.
We're, we're already By making, making people have to have parking on their properties, which is hard, which I'm glad we're not getting rid of. But like, I mean, just parking is, right now, to me, it's a, it's a, it's a very non-issue, yeah. And and then, I mean, unless, like Joe said, if we have some data-driven information that really shows us that parking is an integral part of us moving forward as a community, then I'd be, I'd be willing to engage with that one.
Yeah, I think the object was just to ask.
No, no, I'm
Citizens.
So don't let my tone
Grand scheme
Come off as as aggressive or I just don't see it as an issue, that's my opinion.
All right. I guess that's it.
Great, well, I got some great input tonight, I really appreciate it. And uh we will be back and it won't take us six months or seven months to get back to you, okay? It'll be a little sooner than that, and uh so we'll have a check-in late fall.
We are planning on taking the railroad signs down for now, but we can keep them.
I was wondering if we actually own those, um, that's good to know. We actually acquired that when we acquired it right away.
Yeah, we're taking out the northerly signpost right now because it's in the way of a sidewalk uh ADA ramp. And it would move eventually, if there's room, up to across from the other side, if that's the chosen vision. If 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 we're gonna use those, right? So, you know, everything is just preliminary, right? This is for discussion right now. So we need to take the one, one on the north has to come out because of the railroad avenue improvements we're doing right now. So, makes sense.
Perfect. Right, Council on the other items for discussion. No, I just wanted to read a, something that was posted on a Community Lifelines Facebook uh this morning. And I just thought it'd be real nice to read it, it says, we had a young individual who found himself nowhere to go after a tragic loss of his mother. He came to Community Lifeline seeking shelter to be connected with services so that he could move forward with his life. He came to us with only clothes on his back and some worn-out boots. When Sergeant La- Larson, Lawson, from Shelton Police Department heard that he was in need of shoes, without hesitation, he came to rescue. To say this was a very kind and generous act and made this young person's day is an understatement. For the first time in a week, we got to see this young person face the light up. We are very appreciative and grateful of the partnerships and support that we received from the Shelton Police Department and the officers who assist us. We see you, we appreciate you, all of the hard work that you do. Yeah, all right, good work. I thought it was real nice.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jay.
Make your positive stuff.
And you know, the nice thing about when you read these, we, the police department doesn't get enough credit. And the people who do a lot of work don't get enough credit, and I think that it's really important to read these out.
Yeah, good work.
All right, Sergeant Lawson.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sergeant Lawson. All right, any other items for discussion? I mean, it's during at seven oh eight P M.